Three months.
Three months.
Next one, I wish to allow my share of red talk to nothing. You know, I do. Right. Yeah. 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 I told you, I was like, no, that's because that's what you're asking. So. Yeah. Yeah. Our business is one of the ones. Okay. I told you. Yes. I saw. I thought my mind was just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't tell you.
There is seven o'clock in the Millie County Board Super Bowl for September eighteenth. There comes the war at seven p.m. We have a call. A few videos.
A great response to be done. A great issue just for a select people. This is just for the offers. Um, just want to answer being just more valuable than everything we can say is not as good. Name it.
But the. The blood of the United States of America, to your republic, for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, David. Some of the.
Yes, sir. There's, there's one little operation. If it will be with board approval, I'd like to do, uh, we've got Michael Lutz in here from the auditing firm, Robinson Farmer Cox. And he is fairly deep into the league. He's number four on the department plan in his own. We'd like to take him first there if at all possible so he could, uh, head home.
That'd be good.
Just swap the order.
Most low.
Mr. Chairman, I approve the approval of the agenda with the, uh, Ed.
Thank you, Herrs. All the favor.
Aye, aye.
Aye. That's an approval minutes. The question of the Congress. For twenty first of twenty nineteen, right? With the President's chair. All the favor.
Aye, aye, aye. Both lights up.
Approval of financial reports of trackers, August twenty nineteen, accountability balance sheet. The revenue report for August of twenty nineteen, spending report for August twenty nineteen, accounts payable list for August twenty nineteen. This place, young. All the favor. Aye, aye, aye. Both lights, uh, Mr. Chairman? Yes. Before we move on, I'd like to, um, request the board approve a new report for future board naming votes. Uh, some of you may have noticed this branch that's in front of the expense section of our book every month. I asked Carl to do that for me last year and it's been really helpful. You can see every account where it stands here today, how it stands compared last year. And you can just go down the line and see what's in line with where we should be. For instance, we're two months into the year, we should be about sixteen or seventeen percent of our budget. And you can just go down and see it. What we don't have is something similar for CIP. And every month I struggle to try to determine what progress is on CIP projects, how much money has been spent on which project? And it's difficult to see. Sometimes you can go to the accounts payable and report and try to figure it out, but it's just time consuming. And I have, I want to propose a one day report that I took the liberty of making up a couple of third letters so you can see it. And it's something that the staff can do very little time. It's not that difficult. It shows each CIP project, the original cost, there's a column for how much has been spent. And then there's a colored bar that shows the progress of the project. So I move and the instruct staff to include this report once a month for our board audit. Bill, do you have any comments?
I have a question, Tim. Uh, kind of necessary for the drill, same thing.
No, sir, I had, call my dad.
No, nobody's seen him, but he's dead. One more. One. There's a copy again.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think, uh, Chairman, I think this needs to be run by a financial director and she, she can be in her system. And, uh, maybe find something there or something similar to there that will suit, but, uh, you know, she can, she runs that finance department. I think she needs to, you know, this, I was wanting to push this one side.
Uh, we just hold a little thirty days and see if we can get done and come back to it. Fair enough. All right. Actually, we have a public comment session. Anything that you would like to talk first that is not only the junk, come on.
Good evening.
Good day.
My name is Stuart Price. My, my wife and I live in the Chula. Yesterday, the governor issued an executive order expanding access to clean energy. This executive action directs state governments, including DQ and Mines Minerals and Energy, to support even part solar energy, energy efficiency, the procurement of forty percent renewable energy by the year twenty twenty-two, and a clean energy workforce plan to meet growing demands in the state via the Secretary of Commerce. So how does this affect Amelia? First, the workforce plan involves K through twelve curriculum and renewable energy careers. The workforce plan also involves Virginia Energy Workforce Consortium and Build Virginia. Of course, the school system is far more qualified than I am to determine the merits of this plan, but I would like to put it on the table. Secondly, the clean energy plan section advocates generating electricity that may wood and using renewable energy gases that are derived on site. In the coming months, you and the board can help the governor achieve these clean energy goals and hopefully help brand the commonwealth as a clean energy leader. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. You don't want to help any comments?
I do.
Yes, sir.
First off, that's why, um, my name is Ernest Delby. I'm from Rouse District.
Uh, you have to give your name, sir.
I did, Ernest Delby.
Okay.
I'm from, uh, Rouse District. First off, the best I can do is let the natural white wine go through. You won't be an idiot and I work for the media. Uh, anyway, I come here to offer grass and media strip for three sixty. It seems that we can't afford to cut the grass. And this seems like a trick to light them. But I've watched it all summer. When you come out of Chesterfield until midnight, we look like slum. It's ridiculous how nasty the, uh, media strip looks. And I know y'all have a lot of important things to do tonight. I'm not going to hold you up too long. My wife just told me I was walking out the door. One of her chores has become, she works for Mr. Thomas Star. She goes to pick him up every morning. When she comes out and cheat on us every morning, she says she has to double time getting on three sixty because the grass is so tall. She can't tell whether it's safe for her to pull out. Now, I don't know if it's Deed Ice's responsibility or who it is to cut the grass in the media strip. But with all the dumping fees that we're getting out of baby wood, certainly we can afford to pay somebody to cut the grass in the media strip. It just looks ridiculous that we can't look better for people going through our county to let them know that we are better, cleaner county than what we look like by what we're presenting ourselves as.
I agree with you one hundred percent. The process is V I moves the grass and the grass law.
Well, V I side doing a very good job.
The clean, they have a problem with one. We will take care of that because they'll have a call.
They got money to pay the other lines. Excuse secondary roads, sir.
Excuse. I'll call tomorrow morning and talk to the road manager and you'll take care of it.
Well, I called that little eight hundred little whatever they are in Virginia, and they don't even know where me and county gets. Three port potholes and it took six weeks for them to come to repair that. Six potholes on my road, but they could pay the other lines on secondary roads. So you can't even pass a truck at this four or six mile now. They can't do nothing on these secondary roads well. You don't even see their trucks. Are they sleeping somewhere?
Call, call, make sure the rest.
I know, Mr. Bates, I know. Uh, the cowboy hat wearing now is a two. You know, I can't say today it used to be one of my feet, but I'm just saying, y'all need to step up, put a boot in somebody.
It's all you do all the way, sir.
Well, and, and the, all I'm saying is they need to fix it. I tell you one thing to have tall grass, those fellows right there can hide the bushes in the media strip. They, they.
They do it good.
Doing real well, but it was tall. But anyway, I mean, that's their guy. I'm just saying, but please get the grass done.
The fourth world day.
Well, you know, it is when people come through our county. We already have, and ended up here too on the dentistry. It all reflects teams of your one government. That's people, what kind of trash is here?
I understand.
Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I discussed this with DOD as well, and I was told that this year is different than any other year because they sprayed broken timber on the mediums and not planning to cut the grass anywhere near it. I'll add one of the basics in the view of, you know, one week when we get it. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Gary Bennett. I live in sixty-five twenty Church Street. And I want to get a status on cleaning the water tank and find out if there's a plan going forward. Um, we spent a very long money repelling the house and the water is turning packs black. So put a filter system on it and I've got pictures of the stuff that's coming out of the water. Um, I don't know what is up ahead and where people can look at it. Um, it's pretty intense stuff. It may be just rust, lots of rough, but, uh, it's funny that something shouldn't happen to this water tank. Thank you. Got telephone on rock in there while I'm talking. Very, very equal five, four zero one, one seven seven zero. I have that there when I'm in a period of, many calls. What's, what's that area does? Eric, what do you call five? I'm getting my number video.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. All right, evening. My name is Mr. Wendell. I live in Ace at sixteen Virginia Street. I have two issues. Uh, one, the gentleman just reiterated on the water. I've been checking my water ever since the water came online and I keep getting excuses. I mean, I can, just like you saying black, but I got a work crew tub and it looks like red clay when I run the water a lot of nights. Darren's been by the house, they said change the line, but I'm having to buy filters on weekly basis, sometimes changing twice a day to get washable water in the glass. So if y'all can look into it, just like this gentleman, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, uh, which probably will be very good.
The other issue I have a question is, I live across the street from the elementary school and access road to the ball, there is no access road to the ball field. It's just a dirt path. I spoke to them, Mr. Wilkinson, didn't know they've got stop sign, play sign or something out there, because they're just running out of it. And it's totally unsafe. So if the board would, and you consider looking at what they can do, play field, they put up a playground for the kids. But, um, when they're doing soccer, they're just running out. And dirt is, you run over gravel or anything and make an accessible road impossible to make it safe for everyone in the neighborhood.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Matthew Brown. I'm a district three taxpayer. I'd like to say that, uh, for the past six months or so, I've noticed a lot more cooperation between this board and the school system. Uh, seems like a lot nicer relationship and hopefully it will continue as a good thing will happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else? Hope to comment? Next, the, uh, V dot monthly staff.
You, uh, I have the, uh, their monthly report in front of you. There's nothing out of the ordinary there other than six oh nine has been paid now, so you won't have to hear about that each month. They did a bang up job out there and it took them a while to get to it, but they did it right this time. And I'll try to answer any questions. I can beat on Mr. Mr. Bates to help the, the grass.
They're like, you're gonna give it a break each word?
Y'all have a ticket right back.
Yes, thanks, uh, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, well, my thanks after the last meeting and, uh, and, uh, we, we agreed that, that he was, I didn't know what circus code was or something like that. I said, is that four hundred of asshole? He said, yes. I said, okay. I just want to make sure we weren't going to get a cheap job at the end of this year. And then we got talking back to what it is we should start on, like six thirty-six coming this way or start at three sixty and working off. Uh, and I said, you can come here and ride and do two things. But I said, if you, if you start at three sixty and get down the garden road, we're going to be wanting to pay for it. And we get down after next half a mile, we're going to have the sign that is, you gotta start three second. I just, you know, we could do that. I have a little work. Uh, I'm happy and I'm doing a lot of good practice, so, you know, the V I is, um, doing something right. Doing something right in six oh nine. Thank you.
Any more questions to come? What? Okay. Next to me, uh, Millie County School.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, just a few notes on what's happening in Millie County Public Schools. Uh, we are presently working on the biennial review of our comprehensive plan that was created in two thousand seventeen and will be presenting the status report of that plan to the school board at the October school board meeting. Uh, tomorrow evening, Millie County Elementary School will be conducting a literacy night from five thirty to seven thirty for students and families. And it's my understanding we have some, uh, local members of the county who will be reading to students tomorrow evening. So we appreciate that. I'm sure you're anxious to hear about the status of the elementary playground. And a little bit earlier this evening, I learned that we anticipate having a ribbon cutting ceremony on Monday morning. That's this Monday, September twenty-third at eight thirty a.m., weather permitting. And, um, they're putting down the watch now, so we're hopeful that everything will be ready for Monday morning. And the students have anxiously been waiting for this, so we're very excited. Also want to share with you that homecoming parade is, um, Thursday, October tenth at five. The lineup starts on Wayside Drive. Parade rap is the sentence of years past. Anyone who would like to enter the parade needs to contact Mr. Popkins, he's the recoder at Amelia High School. We are the champions is the theme selected by this year's senior class. There will be a powder cup, uh, football game on Wednesday, February ninth. Um, parade on Thursday and, uh, there's, after the parade on Thursday at seven p.m., there's a movie, outdoor movie that's going to be shared with the high school. The varsity football game is Friday, October eleventh versus Central Lunenburg at seven p.m. We welcome the community to our homecoming event. We also look forward to the attendance of, um, board members and county administrator at our tour that's coming Friday at eight forty-five. And, um, that will start at the school board office. And one last note, last year's enrollment in Millie County Public Schools was one thousand seven hundred twelve students. Our ADM was seventeen oh seven. Our September sixth enrollment this year is sixteen fifty-one students with an ADM of sixteen thirty-three. Our current year budget is built on an ADM of sixteen sixty-three. So we are carefully watching our ADM and have made adjustments to expenditure lines in anticipation of decreased state revenue. We reported this to the school board earlier this month. The reductions we have made thus far do not seem sufficient if our ADM does not increase. So in your board packet, you have, um, the August financial report. And, um, we will be watching our current year status very closely, um, each month. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask us. Ms. Bullock and I are here this evening to answer any questions about our August report.
Thank you so much. Any questions to come? Thank you, Bill. Thanks for having the ball, we're pointing some notes and additions to the Millie County School. Uh, alternative then.
The, uh, Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors met last, uh, the twenty-sixth of last month for a joint public hearing to, uh, amend two sections of the zoning ordinance and then add a section to the zoning ordinance. The two sections that would be amended would be the A five and the RP five to allow utility scale solar energy in the county as a use by special exceptions permit. The addition to the ordinance was to, uh, define three different levels of solar energy. One would be residential scale. The second one would be, uh, a large scale, which would be for businesses. And then the final one would be a utility scale, which is your solar farms. The bulk of the ordinance is related to the solar farm, um, concept. One person showed up at the public hearing. He was a person from a solar energy company, had one concern about the setbacks for the screening for the solar farms were at twenty-five feet. He thought those were a little bit, uh, severe. The Planning Commission disagreed and they discussed it. I think he walked away understanding that the Planning Commission didn't really agree with him on that. There were a couple of minor changes that were presented to you. Uh, residential scale definition was changed a little bit. It previously included small businesses that can be captured on a large scale. So we worked out some little things on that, a couple of typos and misspelled words, do a spell check. But all in all, it was well received, well discussed. The Planning Commission during their meeting voted unanimously to recommend a code of this ordinance. That's what we said at the time. It's involved for disposition.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments? No, all the questions, thanks to the bill. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that, um, we approve the amendments and additions, um, that we discussed concerning energy.
All right. All the favor. Aye, aye. Aye. Oh, this is like, thank you. We should do it. Good. All right, we have an amendment, uh, we need to amend the judgment for, for, for Mr. Love.
He, he would be next. I think if we got this, uh, sister issue out of the way, just wanted to remind you, vice versa.
Yeah. Yeah.
Number six.
All right, next we'll have a, an amendment to make in the comprehensive plan twenty seventeen. All, 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 energy. The candidates considering amendments to make in the comprehensive plan twenty seventeen to allow alternative energy. Which place, young? Good.
No, this, this just, one goes with the other. You can't do something in the zoning ordinance unless your comprehensive plan reflects it. And this puts the reflection into the comprehensive plan for this, these activities to pursue.
Very good. The motion, Mr. Chairman. All the favor. Aye.
Aye, aye.
Oh, this is very light, uh, motion, chair. Okay. This is, uh, thirty-four, Millie County Treasury Terminal Board. Uh, we wouldn't initially have the right to vote. This is a decision now. Supervisor Scott, any question? This is placed on the junk. It's welcome. There it goes.
Yeah, what is it?
Thank you.
Good. So I'm here at the request of members of the board, Scott. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have for me that's related to the Treasury's terminal.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question? Yes, sir. Thanks for coming tonight, Mr. Love. I asked that you come here tonight to clear up a few things that have to do with the general audit on our past treasuries or present treasury. Tonight, this chamber is not quote a law, but unfortunately due to the action of one of our board members, it's become somewhat of a court of public opinion. I'm going to ask you a series of questions. I only need your facts and opinion as a professional, you are and the person that conducted this audit. Very few people here are listening at home or county experts, so if you keep that in mind, when you answer the questions, I would appreciate it. And for the sake of time, if you can answer, we'll guess you help. Good to do that. So we'll get to the easy one first. When will the books finally reconcile?
Um, that would be maybe a lot.
Nobody will say that. So that sounds pretty bad on surface, but that in and of itself is not a quality important to them. Let's give a little context to this and back up just a bit. So that's your ability. Do you give us a definition in layman's terms of what you're in? Um, trial balance is?
A year-end trial balance represents all the balances, and we're specifically talking about treasurer's trial balance, all the balances of the cash investment accounts as of December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Right. And were you given a trial balance by this conference?
I was given a trial balance by, I believe it was the finance department.
Oh, right, but from this client?
Her books. Well, her books, yes. It was printed from the right system.
And would you say you would call it clean trial balance?
Yes, sir.
Meaning that it's a correct word balance?
That's correct.
So fast forward a little bit. You started working on it, I believe, sometime in February.
We actually started in the beginning of December.
But in February, there were some issues that you didn't understand and you had to get clarification from this client?
Well, in February, we received information from treasurers. And there was actually no correspondence between me and the treasurer's office between February and June ten.
Right. And why was that?
There are a couple of reasons. One was the fact that due to the strengths and my time being monopolized during a tax season that was intense related to making up a new tax code, I didn't have the necessary time to dedicate to review the information that was sent prior to June ten.
Right. So the six-month delay is not entirely due to this conference?
No, it was not, right.
And after all, she wasn't tired. She's not susceptible to a live clock with a way with the county anymore. So back to the issues that were on the audit, utilities and accounts that were, you had questions on them?
That's correct.
Some of them had to do with social services table.
That's correct.
You ended up getting no squared away with the change, right?
There was a slight change to the reconciliation in mid-July. Once we got everything straightened out, that was resolved.
And then there's some other accounts also?
Yes, there were several other accounts, mostly investment type accounts, CD accounts that were interest was not posted as of the year end.
Right. These are accounts that have no transaction involved and have just interest coming in.
Usually, right.
So was the interest on those accounts accounted for in the books? Maybe not perfectly the way you would like to see it, but was it wrong or was it just not the way you would like to see it?
The interest was not posted as of December thirty-first. And so what we're able to do is we're able to access balances of public deposits that have been reported to state treasury. And by confirming those balances, we're able to assess whether or not interest or other transactions has been posted to these accounts. And by doing so, we were able to determine that interest had not been posted as of December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Right. Because Ms. Congress was doing something called deposits and transit?
The deposits and transit were not reflected on any sort of reconciliation.
Right.
But she usually made the entries and I say usually in the context of me only working with her the last two years. She usually made the entries at fiscal year end, which is June thirty.
Right. As opposed to Turnover in the middle of the year.
Exactly.
And this method that she used pre-previous year was the same?
I do believe so, yes.
And you audited the books last year?
We audited the books since June thirty, yes, sir.
So when you suggested to Ms. Coleman, the new treasurer, that she began tracking and accounting for this interest and payroll, was she open and willing to do that?
Absolutely.
So I'm almost finished, Mr. Chairman. Once these interests amounts were applied, then everything was reconciled. Was there anything erroneous, misrepresented, missing, misappropriated, or any other way missed by Ms. Coleman?
Not that I can see.
And did you find? One final question. It's been asserted by Mr. Bernard that Ms. Congress's office, in a quote, struggled with its loan dues, end quote. In your professional opinion, at the time you were dealing with the county, have you seen anything that would... Is the evidence of that to be true?
The sample size that I have to use as an example for answering this question is very small. I am on site two weeks a year and have only been here for the last two years. I don't know if it's all on a day-to-day basis and whether or not the workload is too much or too little or just wrong. But in my opinion, as of the year end last year and as of a kind of a preliminary assessment this year, the books seem to be, at least in the treasurer, in all reports, seem to be here.
Right.
And so I have no reason to believe that there is any sort of ineptitude or issues within the treasurer's.
Thank you.
One question, when the books reconciled, were they for everybody?
Were they reconciled? They were, to my knowledge, they were not. The only reason that I say that is because as of June tenth, when I received the trial balance, the balances did not reconcile to the balance that was stated at that time. And I would presume that if all transactions were accounted for in the proper period and posted in a timely manner, that trial balance run, say, February tenth, two thousand nineteen would be the same as trial balance run June.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have your email and they don't, they don't get out of your... Talk about DMV because I'm not familiar with all that, but that's something I cleaned up from last year. And there's some things that led up to that, but this is what I based it on, what I said. What little I've said was that on the nineteenth of July, you said, it's right here. Shall I read it? That's not necessarily up on the table. But you said, "Pammy emailed me last week when I was on vacation about the third activation of items on the December two thousand eighteen bank reconciliation." Unfortunately, the information she provided in her explanation was not enough. It was gone after reconciliation issue. And I spoke with her and she's on week two and nine of the book.
Could you please say?
All I limited to was the nineteenth of July and that day, before your email, it was not, it was not, you said so.
That's correct. However, the
No, I'm not wrong and he's not innocent. And you're not on those. See, I'm just asking, on that day, all I said was she was not on the nineteenth. And I know it is now, but that's your job to come through and you speak. And thanks for that when you leave and that's what we expect. But all the reason why I wrote it up, I wrote it is, and that whole piece right here is based on this right here.
Yeah, and if I may, but may I?
Yes, sir.
And I believe that that statement is accurate.
Thank you.
The issue is that it disregards a lot of other considerations. And those have to do with the timing and also the fact that days after that email was sent, we were able to reconcile with the down change.
I'm sure, I'm sure of that. The vehicle breaks down going through West Virginia on the seventh day of July. You have to put the shop five days. It broke down on the seventh day of July. It's impossible that somebody gives you key to your payment field and you drive away. It's impossible to that. So it's just on the nineteenth of July, all I'm gonna, I know you have the available time.
All right, gentlemen, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
So, Mr. Love. How important is it that the reconciliation is done in the proper period as long as everything is in order by the law?
It's very important.
I mean, it's important as a practical operational procedure. My point is, what was wrong with the books? Was anything out of balance or was anything done wrong? Or was it just a procedural issue?
It was a reconciliation. And so the books were correctly sealed.
No adjustments had been made as far as writing money off or writing money on it, just putting the interest in the proper account?
Yeah, except for the interest had to be recorded in the proper period. The interest was not recorded. Otherwise, the other items were just reconciling items that had to be incorporated into a summary reconciliation in order to get the balance back to the
If Ms. Congress had still been the treasurer at the end of the year, she would have done that much. She did it the year before, which is
Presumably, yes.
All right, then on the way back to this, folks, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. And then finally, Ms. Pride, nice lady. She did a good job of what she did. And you did a good job of what she did. And I thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, next we have a general, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to make another small table, please. I mean, Ms. Congress, Ms. Coleman, and the entire staff at the treasurer's office voted positively.
You're not, they're not backing, they're not backing your vote.
We're not doing that. Yes, we are.
Now, you want to?
I'm making a statement.
It's not gonna happen.
All right, I'll hold it to my, my personal statement here.
Whatever.
Do it again.
All right, well, next we have a proposed comprehensive for what may have granted more. My name is Committee Informants. All of the boards, we have made, we need to make a day. All right. The public library.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to appoint, make a motion to appoint Marion Reynolds, seventeen, three forty-four, Cowshoe Road, for the James Yeller Handler Public Library trustee.
All right. So, okay. All but aye?
Aye.
All but both ayes, motion, Chair. All right, next would be special. I want to thank the committee of white press. The application has been received, all white press during the weekend of October, Tom Scott. Any questions or comments?
Good, Mr. Chairman.
All but aye?
Aye.
All but disapprove, ayes, motion, Chair. Next, a public hearing on the Amelia County Sidewalk Project. Public hearing with the mayor, the governor, and the Amelia County Sidewalk Project. Anyone like to speak on the project?
Good evening. My name is Todd Fortune. I'm deputy director with the Commonwealth Regional Council, which is a local planning district in this area. I just basically wanted to give the board and everyone in attendance some background on the project. At the end of June, the county was approached by VDOT set local residency that possibly submitting this project for transportation alternatives set aside fund. In a very quick turnaround, we assisted the county with a pre-application on July first. That application's been pre-screened and it's now in the application phase. Applications for transportation alternatives set aside is going to be private first. Now, I believe you have in front of you a project, proposed budget, and a concept plan. Basically, the project entails new sidewalk from where the existing sidewalk ends near Amelia Academy and going down by the schools. And part of the project being to provide permission access between the schools and the courthouse village area because the sidewalk where it ends now basically counts up to courthouse village area. The budget you have in front of you, we've been going back and forth with VDOT. And I'll try and keep this brief. Basically, what we did, the project, it was a part of a smart scale project, I believe, last year. What we did for that smart scale, we took out the sidewalk portion and we adjusted some of the numbers based on a couple of factors. One is, was transportation alternatives, VDOT actually charged us money to grant to review it. I'm not really too much into that. That's just something they do. We also tweaked our construction cost based on what we have seen. We're actually working a couple of sidewalk projects elsewhere in the region and a similar scope. And basically tweaked the construction cost to come up with the figure we see in the sheet in front of me. I will note that the program provides up to eighty percent federal funding with a twenty percent local match requirement. So you're looking at, so you see the number there, eight hundred seventy-four thousand, two hundred dollars is what we are estimating at this time. I will note that VDOT has been showing this number and they are actually reviewing it. So hopefully it'll be getting back to us soon and we'll see how close you are on that. But assuming, assuming that number is fairly accurate, you're basically looking at a balance of six hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. You're taking grant from local match of about a hundred seventy-five thousand. Now, the way the program works is you would submit the application and Commonwealth Transportation Board, Lake Ward's probably made June of next year. And if the program, the project is funded, then the next step would be VDOT would execute a project, what's called a project of administration to grant with the county. You really can't do anything on the project until that happens, if you're constantly reimbursing account of the match. If the county were to apply and get funded and sign, they don't want to do it between now and execution of the agreement, you do have the option to back out. The other thing I will point out is that transportation alternatives set aside used to be an annual program of amounts every two years. So if you don't apply this year, you have to wait till twenty twenty-one. Unless you want to apply a smart scale, which I think next year is going to be the next round, I think, I'll quote you that. But so that's a real quick background on the project. What we need from the board tonight is, first of all, a decision on whether to submit the application. And yes, there should be a resolution in your packet. That resolution will need to be adopted because it will be the part of the application. And I'll take any questions if I have any.
So why did the cost triple from your last mention of this one?
I, that's kind of a tough question to answer. I'll let you tell you is that what we originally pulled from smart scale, what I did, the other two projects, is just based on what we're seeing. And it's really the best answer I can give you. What we're seeing is construction costs for this type of project usually going up and up and up. The latter answer.
And in Todd's defense, the documents for smart scale weren't that close to being right than we did with. As we were reviewing, VDOT asked where those numbers came from. And the gentleman from VDOT that had provided those numbers was standing right there and there would be an answer if he was going to come up with those numbers. So the numbers have been sketchy on this around. I think Todd's numbers now are very close to where they need to be as opposed to what I saw at the last meeting. The two hundred thousand dollar mark, that was, that was way off. You know, when you figure these things with just a matchbook cover and stuff, you typically go ninety to ninety-five dollars on one ear foot on these things. That number was way off. I think Todd's got it, got it reeled in pretty tight right now.
We saw the women's and men's, women's overall, is it a lot of people?
Yeah, that's a streetscape project over in Dillon. It actually involves more than just sidewalks. It also involves street lighting, street furnishings, some landscaping. But you're correct. The total budget was about one point four million. And this project is really a sidewalk.
Young, have a question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fortune, the process that you're going through for the sidewalk is just the same thing that you're going through with all kinds of projects, such as, so you have the opportunity to seek out grant funding. And then you have this, you don't find the grant funding you're looking for, you have the opportunity to back out and set aside. I'm not sure what you call that clause, exit clause or whatever.
Well, it's not really an exit clause. What'll happen is you really aren't Well, it's not really an exit clause, what'll happen is, you, you, you really aren't allowed anything until you sign that project administration agreement. Uh, at any time before then, the county decides that they don't want to do the project, they have to pull out. Uh, now, I will say that if you do sign the project administration agreement and you get authorization from VDOT to proceed, any costs that you incur and get reimbursed by VDOT, if you don't complete the project and decide later on to end it, any, anything, it's VDOT's reimbursement board, they could, they could, they could require you to give back. So just keep that in mind.
Anyway, this one just reflects so, um, much, just like the water tower that we were considering, you know, the grant funding didn't come sufficiently left to proceed or anything like that. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, 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 no questions? Mr. George, there are other. We're still in an open forum for debate on the sidewalk situation, anyone have a comment? All right, we're going, yes, sir.
Hey, Mr. General, may I ask Mr. Lingoff? I never cross the word "project" in the text. My only concern and question is what would happen on the other side of the street? Would I get a hog curd, or is it going to be ditch?
The, the last conversation I had with me, uh, it was prior to Todd getting involved. On, on your side of the road, you live on the same side as the department's.
Yes.
Yeah, there, there wouldn't be any curving or anything going on that side at this time. Uh, there's a couple of ways to approach this sidewalk project. And one of them is to widen thirty-eight from the academy through the school zone to the width that it is, you know, previous, as you get into the village. And at that point in time, the sidewalks would have curved gutter and on the plummy underneath the sidewalks. That takes the project to the two million dollar range. To keep it in the million dollar range, those sidewalks would actually keep the current ditch lines, build the sidewalks closer towards the houses. So you don't have to capture all that water capture and all that kind of, kind of thing, plus widen the road because that gets huge at that point in time.
So you look at potentially in the donate, take your problem?
Yeah, and we don't, we don't want to go there at all. It's going to be bad enough trying to get the easements as, as is. At the same time, we've got to move a lot of utilities. So, the least we can do to make a decent project going through there to get those kids off the street.
And, and out of the yard.
And out of the yard. Though it's on the opposite side of the street, we're talking fifteen, it's fifteen year olds, you know, out of the sense that get in some of that. But that, that's, I, okay, I, I know, but now we're fine, I guess this is, then.
You know, like you're saying, you would have to wrap wide, the road is maybe a hundred and fifty yards across the canyon to where thirty-eight is already wide.
Right.
Most, this is, that's a huge proposition.
Okay.
No problem, that's my concern.
Thank you. It's not going to get worse, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, sir, and then also, you have a comment? All right, with this form of time, we're going to close the public, um, sidewalk. Gentlemen, we have.
Mr. Chairman, um, so what we need to do from here, we're going to proceed on with the CRC on this, we need a resolution. So we've got, so we've got this resolution here, um, to be able to extend it if you want, is there a whole packet?
So, do you have the resolution?
Resolution, I think it is, or that, I did have a copy of it here. And just for your information, the wording from resolution is actually the VDOT's word wording, in case you're wondering. Would you like me to read it?
Yes.
Okay, okay, here it is, it's a bit worded, okay. Uh, whereas in accordance with Commonwealth Transportation Board Construction Allocation Procedures, is necessary that resolution be received from sponsoring local jurisdiction or agency requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT, to establish a project in the county of Amelia. Now therefore, be resolved that the county of Amelia requests Commonwealth Transportation Board to establish a project for the construction of Amelia Courthouse Village area sidewalk project. Be affirmed resolved that the county of Amelia hereby agrees to provide its share of total cost for preliminary engineering, right of way, and construction of this project in accordance with the project financial documents subject to appropriation. Be affirmed resolved that the county of Amelia hereby agrees to enter into a project administration agreement with VDOT and provide the necessary oversight to ensure the project is developed in accordance with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements for design, right of way, construction, acquisition, and construction of the project. Be affirmed resolved that the county of Amelia will be responsible for maintenance and operating possible facility as constructed unless other arrangements entered into date with VDOT. Be affirmed resolved that if the county of Amelia subsequently enlists the council project, the county of Amelia hereby agrees to reimburse VDOT for the total amount of cost expended by VDOT through the date VDOT has notified of such cancellation. The county of Amelia also agrees to repay any funds previously reimbursed that are later being ineligible by the Federal Highway Administration or VDOT. Be affirmed resolved that the board of the county of Amelia hereby grants authority of the county administrator to apply the funds and execute project administration agreements as well as other documents necessary for approved projects.
And so, gentlemen, we have a question, we have a show. So, yeah. All right, we're going to close the public hearing at this round. No more than seven minutes. All right, gentlemen, which is closer?
Chairman, we would be proud of this topic in this position, and I would very much like to make a bid.
All the favor, aye. All the votes, some aside. Next, we have a proposed comprehensive broadband agreement. The broadband agreement was closed, and we will approve it.
Well, Mr. Gore is here, and Mr. Gore is, I would say, the main author. This is what we spent the last, I guess, four months working on. It's an agreement between Nittany County, Amelia County, and River Street Communications of Virginia to bring this wireless broadband to Amelia and Nittany.
Before you mind, it's bound on this little...
Happy to, Mr. Chairman, board members. So I think you all had a chance to review it, and it's been posted on the county website some time now. And I'll just hit the highlights, ask you any questions you might have. Mr. Chairman, explain the parties are. This is in partnership also with the backup commission. There's a one point, seven million dollar grant, matching grants and balance, maybe three point four million dollars from the counties. And that's slightly weighted towards Nittany, doesn't it, their population that needs and scope is a little bigger there. Exact ratio off the top of my head, but it's... So half the money is coming from the backup commission. Divisions three years for the project for completion under the grant warrants. The little background of River Street Communications, they are, were born of a telephone co-op out of North Carolina, and sort of spin-off from that cooperative, and they have done projects around Charlotte area, Charlotte, Carolina area, several jurisdictions. They are also in King, Queen County, Virginia, and I believe it's maybe a second project they're going to launch. They, the broadband speeds is required by FCC, or twenty-five megawatts download and three megawatts upload. Here is, at least ninety-five percent of the census blocks, and this is what's required by the backup commission. Eighty-five percent of the census blocks will receive twenty-five, will receive twenty-five three service. That's certainly the objective, in cases where that service can be met, because of the circumstances of location, and maybe opportunities for the potential subscriber to potentially make enhancements, such as moving that equipment there on location to improve the signal. In other words, not everyone is going to be going to get the top twenty-five three service, but that certainly is, the service is going to be provided, and to the extent it can be provided without under the agreement. The company is also required to put in a million dollars of fiber investment. This is going to be more for middle mile backup type, backhaul to connect the network and the towers. Though at this point, the fiber component is the last milestone component, that's up to how the project is planned to move forward. So that is an investment above beyond the visual and corporate million dollar portion of power that the company has committed. The specifics of the project will be, are in progress once we've reached this agreement. The company will be performing a market study. They will be holding multiple public meetings. I'm sure they'll work that out with the county staff, and once you go on this, we'll publicize as a need to do. Well, we can put, that's going to help inform River Street as they develop a plan. The preliminary plan for the project is due in the middle of December, right before your seventh board meeting. The, it's going to get to have a much better feel for how this will happen, how it will be done, where we'll go first. The final plan is due February board meeting. So at that point, the project will be moving forward again, the idea is it will be done in three years, that's a requirement of backup commission. There are just some other highlights in the contract. There are, there are some revenue sharing provisions with the county should certain levels of subscriber rate penetration occur. So if we get high numbers of uptake and subscribership, and River Street is making certain levels of revenue off that, then there are provisions for precursors of that to come to the county, and the county could, at that point, put that money back in the project to further expand employment. So there's, and we hope we get to that point, in other words. So that is a provision that's out there, we go to get to. Besides the public meetings that they've committed to holding, the company also is committed to come to a board meeting, and that's just as scheduled. It's going to be a regular board meeting or a special board meeting just for that purpose. But that'll be in addition to the public meetings that they're going to conduct over the next few months. I think that's where the highlights of it. Again, if anyone wants to see the agreement, it's on the county outside. There will be a final version that makes a few more sort of grammar and formatting edits that we need to clean up before you all actually execute, but that'll be done in this week. Then we will approve the agreement, the address we last night, the general, the general board.
Cool. Any questions? Comments?
One thing I'd like to add, that I think is important, is the twenty-five three package, standard package, forty-five dollars a month. There's low income, not right word, but for, what do they call it, the digital inclusion customers, that's thirty-five dollars and seventy-five cents a month. So they're, they get a price of, just about anybody should be accessible to them.
That's the good point. I forgot to mention that for the digital inclusion customers, the test for that is any family where their children are on the free or reduced school months, whatever they are. And that's a little of the school, the school vision to compile that as part of the company, so they have these options for the inclusion rates. There's also a package that is above twenty-five and three, that would be more organized as orders of business needs. Again, we've provided all this to the backup commission, and they are supportive of the agreement, and they think it turns out good.
Cool. Mr. Chairman?
Just for people listening, if we're all just standing here staring at you, just making it clear that, at least I asked a lot of questions leading up to this, some of the changes will be in some way, but we were actively involved in reviewing this comment.
That's fine, that's fine. I appreciate, yeah, Mr. Scott and the board and staff, appreciate all the input.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Gentlemen, which way? Please, Mr. Chairman, all the favor. Aye. All the public lights on. Motion to adjourn. Next, sir, a special, not of the annual Christmas parade and tree lighting resolution. The application is then received for the annual Christmas parade and tree light, the resolution for street lighting attached. Mr. Chairman, all the favor. All the favor, aye. All this room, twice a minute. Next is the county of Amelia's court.
All right, Mr. Chairman, the county administrator's report, the coast speed for waste management for the month of August is two hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. DMV select report, gross collections were ninety-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars. We earned four thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and fourteen cents. Plus we sold a Department of Game and Inland Fisheries license with, earned this fall. The Piedmont Regional Jeep and Out pension center commission is under tab number thirteen. That's information from the August board meeting. We did not have a meeting today. And the, obviously, I think you know about the last month, the big project is replacing the root up there. There is money in the bank to take care of that, there's not going to be an extra assessment or anything. The Piedmont of the CRC Regional Council has submitted their items of interest for August, that's under tab number fourteen. Anybody's got any questions about any of those, we just came from a meeting up there today, hopefully I can answer them for you. Piedmont Regional Jail Authority Board Meeting, that's the next tab, tab number fifteen. You know, there's, I think just part of that business model, if you're going to end up in court, there's a whole lot of that going on. I guess we were one of the latest regional jails to show up in the news. We've got another lawsuit going on up there. And we didn't get much of a report about it today outside the county or town, that paid for by the insurance company. I'd be glad to answer any questions that are on that. If anybody has anything, and if not, that's all I have, is a way of reporting, and we're down for board members' comments.
All right, gentlemen. In respect of addition one, the highway departments, who, based on our fateful ride, if we have a weekend, we will take a ride, and we will drive, we will rush everywhere, and count on, again, what problems we had, what we, the life to have, as well as if these were talking with the drivers that were there. So that's pretty much my line, additional two. Yeah, so I'll pick up where I'm at.
No, I'm just not going to do it to the point of all of them. I maintain that Congress is at home, and not... Fire staff, the creatures of office, and all of them. We know what the problem is for attacking their collective character in Division Three. What's the point making these claims when a thirty-one year loyal servant to Amelia retired, gone for six months, and unable to defend herself? It was clearly only to risk her character. If nobody else will, I will stand up for Miss Conner and her legacy. She did a great job for Amelia, earned her tenure. Just because Mr. Barner and others in this government, I might add, don't like her because she asks for more money for her employees every year, so what? That's what bosses do for their employees. And you had the joy of turning her down every year. So why on December nineteen, two thousand and eighteen, did we come up with a resolution that unanimously adopted praising her for her thirty-one years of dedicated and faithful service? Do these resolutions mean nothing? We might as well not even do that. All it means is you're going to be ripped to shreds by a county leader six months later. Mr. Barner can trash me all he wants in the newspaper, and in public, and he appears to be enjoying that quite well. I've sat silently and not allowed, not, I've allowed it to go on and not said anything. I can take all it can give and pour, so just bring it on, but rightfully her. It's all garbage, and he's putting it in the paper, including more today, and it's just a disgusting display of vindictiveness by a man who's clearly upset and feels cheated out another four years.
Don't bet you want to move on.
He can't go a quarter of all, he can't just go graciously off his board. Speaking of legacies, this is he's ruining his. Time will not reflect favorably on his behavior. It's desperate rampages, it's pitiful to watch, and it's so far beneath the standards of this board that he claims to hold so few. Mr. Chairman, last year, Mr. Barner made a big deal out of the fact that I had to apologize in the IDA for something I said about him. I didn't have to apologize, I did. I said, sorry, I messed up, and I agree, you want to go for it. If Mr. Barner will not apologize, I think this board should apologize for him, and then turn around and sentence Mr. Barner. And I'll make that a motion, I'll make that a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
You got a, Mr. Gore, a motion, you have a motion on the floor?
You don't, you don't have a motion.
Yes, I, I ain't doing nothing out of order, I'm giving my public comments.
That's me, I'm not doing that.
We should put, how can we make this down, Mr. Chairman? We should pull, how everyone?
Mr. Chairman, I am sorry that the public, the witness, this. This is not the way we can finish this.
It's not the way we should.
And, and I'm just, I just want to apologize for this. This is an issue that we should have taken care of, indicated session, a closed session on here, no, I'm in you. And, you see, because I would rather see a sermon than to give one in here. And I'm just hoping that we learn from, we learn from this. We've got to get along if we're going to do effective justice. And I'm hoping that we, things kind of start out, of, you know, simply says, and pure each other on the one-on-one, like human being, like me and him. Six, it's all that. That's all, actually, I had nothing else.
Thank you, Mr. President. You want to know something?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think you, you had asked me to remind you to instruct the county attorney to begin the paperwork for the annual review.
Yes. Uh, I was just, we go, we have called, if you would please get to the paperwork, we got to evaluate, follow, like they haven't done above that to me, and it's a part. That's a real, we did a good job last time, that's true, yeah. Any other comments?
Yes, I'm talking about another review, was what we argued personally, that we were going to do in May.
I knew what. Yes. All right, I see no reason to get, so we need to continue, so a closed session. Motion to adjourn. We will adjourn the meeting at that time. Can we get away? No way. No way. Who's at all this year? Everybody at here. I knew that.
All over the county, right now. Okay. So this is week seven from now. I've got two years. Anyway, you got five, same two years. T E S, now be running, if you're lucky, for the monster coming. This is a hundred and fifty-eight million dollar problem, that's going to come in during the year. Say a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars. The same thing that's been down, the back of my heart. See? Because they are now a little bit lower, because they have to be made, probably one or two. Why is that on the plan? And that, they have all the right, constantly, they call. What River Street, they got a presence around them, there's a COVID team, I got a whistle, I'm there. Yo, I could have my concentration, they were, they never got close. Right now, I have no idea then, so, let's see what they act like. No, when you found mine, and then he's not, I was... You and mine, I go a little bit. How you doing, sir? Hey, hey, you're good.
Um, yeah, I use my phone, I don't.
I had this, I'm only in there when you text.
Well, I use my, I use my cell phone, I can watch, like, movies or anything, I can, I can hear it, my TV, and I can, I can do that. I don't do, use the internet as much, the only time I use it basically is PayPal bills or how long, I just, I just... Or PayPal bills. Well, and what I mean by PayPal bills, it's automatic withdrawal, so I just make sure that it hasn't been taken out. Yeah, I don't put it in my credit card, so I just, I just check if it gets taken out. It's all, I'll be straight with the bank for all that stuff. You take care of serving. Thank you, sir.